Actually, before we start, I would like to mention a couple of longtime residents that we've lost recently. Robert Wagner is somebody that often came to our city meeting. Kind of been missed. Kevin was very active in the, since I rejected, so good. So, thank you, Kevin. And we've lost Dave Pastor. He was a video reporter for the community and a long time business person. So, just wanted to mention those folks because I quit. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Call to order, Tuesday, August 11th, City Council Work Session. An approval agenda.
So moved.
All in favor?
Yes.
Okay. First item, Tourism and Arts Commission recommends policy changes. Jim?
I'm Jim Kingwell, Chairman of the Tourism Arts Committee. I'd like to recognize, actually, the first thing would be to call together the core of our folks who are here. Greg and Julie are here on site, Steve Sinkler on Zoom. Greg Bell was unable to make the meeting tonight. And Mike Morgan may check in on Zoom, which we'll wait to see. The members are here to hold me accountable for any statements I make that may be misrepresenting what happened in our last meeting work session. We raised some issues that really refer back to the powers and duties of the committee when it was initially established to overview and oversee the application of, or the usage of funds from that first tax issue in July of 2010. And since then, there have been two additional tactical measures that have come into play with restricted usage funding that will come up in discussions of whether or not we think the overview capability of the committee should be utilized or more than just that first initial 1% of tax funding. The issues you'll see in the memorandum that we sent out, we raised some concerns over the ability of the committee to respond and make improvements in the relationship with the applicants. Often, we can see times when their proposals might be improved, and we do try to engage with them to give some hints or indications that might better utilize their capabilities and what the city can supply. So, we'd like to have you consider whether or not we can make recommendations to the changes or additions to what they have applied for, at the same time that we're looking to control, put some controls on the recommendations that our own committee can make in response to the individual applications. We've looked at the award discussions we had, and we've recognized that there's a potential for individual committee members to skew the overall findings with the current way that we do an averaging across the board. There are no limitations on any recommendation that an individual member could make. And we're proposing that you consider limiting what any individual member can recommend as the amount to the amount requested, and give the committee the potential to have a discussion as to whether or not we think more funds would be appropriate to help strengthen the outcome from their applications. There have been a couple of instances where we've made recommendations for more money than was requested by individual members. This is one reason it came up. But we recognize that someone could say, okay, we have this whole big pot of money. Let's give it all to one applicant. And that would skew the recommendations made by the other committee members. But if there's some kind of a break put on any individual one, which is what we're proposing, then if the committee were empowered to say, okay, but we feel your application is not quite adequate to carry out what you're doing, then the committee might make a recommendation to give an additional award that would have to be agreed upon by a majority of the committee. So, we're looking for a way to help strengthen the applications that we might have and take advantage of the expertise, the marketing skills, and the variety of perspectives that are there on the committee itself. So, that's one thing we'd like you to consider.
Jim?
Yeah?
Would you mind if we talked about these point by point?
Yeah, I'd like to.
If you want to move on all the way?
Oh, we could do it any, any old way you'd like.
I'm just asking.
Well, just, I just don't want to lose track of these and then at the end having forgotten something that was.
Oh, I know that phenomenon.
Yeah.
Well, I have a question on that one. What, what limits you now from doing that? Because the way that, from observing these meetings through the years, the way that you do it now is you average everything out and so forth, take a vote, and then you average out the vote. But that's something that you just kind of, the committee just kind of developed at the time. I mean, it's not, it's not written in stone that you do that. So, what limits you from being able to make that a recommendation now?
Because we established that procedure, the procedure that we have followed, any one committee member is given the option to throw out any recommendation that be appropriate.
Right.
And we feel that this is an unlimited power of a single member to skew the total award amount. So, we're just looking to build into our limitation by ordinance.
So, in other words, if somebody asks for five, say, $5,000?
Well, but I love the idea. I want to give them $55,000.
Okay. So, what you want to do is limit how much they can, how much more than the amount requested they, that can be given? Is that right?
We actually don't.
Okay.
What we want is for a committee agreement that would require a majority of the committee so that the committee would have to agree that a larger grant would be approved, rather than allowing, the way we're currently operating, a single member could grant a skew.
I see what you're saying.
You decide, and $200,000 would be, you know, make any event a far more marvelous thing than the original concept.
So, you could come up, as a committee, come up with that average amount first and then talk about it and say, but they really need to have another $5,000. But the whole committee then would have to, to agree to that. Is that what you're asking?
Well, our feeling was that we should, in the committee discussions that we had, that we should literally limit ourselves to an award that would not exceed what was requested.
Okay.
Because that should have come with a plan. Although the committee may say, that's a nice plan as far as it goes, but it may need to go further. And if we had the idea, if a majority of our committee had a feeling that a larger award would be appropriate, this would give us a mechanism to do that without relying on one person to say, well, I really think it'd be better, and so I'm going to award a massive amount of money to this and achieve that without a majority recommendation.
And there's, and you're limit, and, and so you can't do it the way you would like to do it because, are you limited? Are you just saying, give us the permission to, to do it?
Actually, I guess we're asking for permission to put that limit on ourselves so that the, actually, the establishment of this does give us powers to develop rules and procedures.
Jim, I need a little clarification on when these two things happen. When does a member apply on their own a larger amount?
You see, that, there is no mechanism for that.
It just happens during?
The committee itself could not be an applicant to, to tax funds. And actually, we're asking for a little empowerment to be able to make the recommendation along those lines if it's tied to an applicant.
It's interesting that you have an issue with that now because, as I recall, when I was on the committee, we didn't ever go over the amount that someone requested unless, as a group later on, we thought maybe there might be a reason for that. But nobody ever outbid what they were asking for, to my knowledge.
Which is, it's really good because we think the committee has been fortunate in establishing people without particularly vested interests. The only vested interest seems to be a community effect rather than, you know, an individual axe to grind. But we can envision someone who has a special interest actually trying to skew those, those figures in the future.
But it hasn't happened yet.
It has not happened in any nasty way. It's been pretty much with agreement with the committee so far. But we're going to get into some additional issues. Part of the request to expand the overview oversight of the committee beyond what we've been doing so far because we're going to question or throw up for you to consider whether or not there should be oversight of all of the restricted lodging funds under one, one committee. And if sometime in the future that should happen, then I would want to see some real safeguards and procedures that are already established by precedent to prevent any particular lobbying interest from having a seat on the committee with no constraints.
Chris?
Yeah. These are kind of set up as ideas that they were talking about. So, depending on what your decisions are, some of these may be put in an ordinance, some of them may, you just vote on it as a procedure issue. So, we will figure that part of it out afterwards. And also, I want to, if I can just jump in here, Jim, because I forgot one, and we can make it number six, and that's that the committee talked about being able to initiate a project on their own, like the sound system, the power at the band shop. Because we, none of us were 501(c)(3), so they really couldn't do that. So, it was their idea, but we had to find another funding source to do it. So, that was something else we talked about, and I apologize if it's not on here.
It falls in line with trying to tap the particular skill sets from the way that the committee has been assembled. We appreciate that we were able to expand it to seven members probably because we felt that offered a broader spread of perspectives. We don't have any, any strong or dominant special interest on the committee now. We hope to maintain that and assure it going forward.
My sense would be, and I'm just going to throw out kind of an idea, is that the committee members should not be proposing dollar amounts. They could ask an applicant to consider expanding their project and, you know, expand their own ask, but I don't think a committee member should, at any point, should go over the amount that originally is asked in a dollar amount kind of connection. So, in that sense, that's where I would take it, but that's for discussion.
Yeah, we have been sensitive to that very issue because we don't, we're caught recognizing that we don't want to micromanage the usage, but we do want to judge the usage of funds. So, we're looking for some way to offer guidance that might improve proposals.
That would be the way I would technically go. Yes. Jim, I guess I.
Well, what Sam said as far as not, the committee shouldn't be proposing more than the applicant asked for. The applicant looks together a plan and project and requests for certain funds, meet them. They may have other sources of funds too. So, I would say it should be limited, what the committee does should be limited to the applicant asked for. And why you would, I guess I'm totally envisioning why you decide as a committee that this applicant needs more money when that applicant may have already got more money somewhere else and they've only asked for this. I would limit it to that if they say, well, we, I can't receive any reason to give them more than asked. And when it comes to the committee making recommendations and you say there's no limit, you know, somebody can say, well, they should get $200,000. That would eliminate that, to recommend more than what they asked. Then I get down to a situation where there's, say, five members think the maximum amount that they asked for is sufficient. The two numbers, say, have it at zero. Then, because of whatever reason, personal reason, whatever, they pull it down. When the majority proposes a higher number, you get the whole amount gets pulled down because somebody's playing a game. And people go the other way too.
And that has happened.
They shouldn't get more than $50. And somebody says, they should get the whole $10,000 or whatever. So, one way to control that is you draw the highest and lowest bid. Then they have to team up if they want to play that game. So, that's another way to think about it. If you're really concerned about your committee playing political games, then you're probably even with the committee members. But one way to eliminate that is allow the high, you know, one of the high ones and one of the low ones. And that sort of becomes self-regulating as long as nobody can get above the actual amount. One other comment on the recommendation. It says, at, at the point at which TAC is voting on an application, the recommendation for any additional amounts suggested in the earlier conversation could be added. I'm not comfortable with adding amounts based on previous conversations. If not in their application, then depending on minutes of meeting to be the authorization for that amount. So, if there's a strong feeling by the committee that you want to give them more than they asked for, then they should have a provision for amending their application and resubmitting. But then the other applicant would say, well, wait a minute. I want more money, and I'm going to submit a new application or an amended application. So, I don't think you just open a can of worms by saying, we'll find a mechanism to give you more than you asked for. You know, ask for what you need. Be realistic. And that's ought to be it. And that's, which is sensible.
Okay, then?
Okay.
Move on to point two, I guess.
Always count for discussion, and we're definitely getting the discussion in response. Our next issue, ah, actually, that covered number two, number three, was the question of, there are three sources of restricted funds. The TAC committee was set up to check the accounting and direct usage, the appropriate usage in accordance with state law, for funds from that first year, the July 1st, 2010. But since that time, there have been two additional percentages from, of lodging, transit lodging tax that are in usage. We recognize a difference between setting policy and doing overview. There's a direct tie-in with how the council has decided to try to dedicate funds from those things for particular projects, specifically the old school site and designating funds for our DMO. Currently, the DMO is set up for quarterly reports to the city. We're asking whether it's appropriate for the expertise on the TAC committee to look over their expenditures and to see how they fit with the overall strategy that TAC oversees with the other percentage, how much overlap there might be, or how much, there might be any funding given for one reason that might be utilized for another. We're not asking to negotiate the contracts the city has with the DMO, but we're suggesting we might have a role in overviewing how those expenses have been made. The same thing might come up after we have an operational facility on the north end from the county's lodging tax usage. So, we're questioning if there is the appropriate overview of those funds, if that's something that the city council thinks you have a handle on, or if you want to include that in the general oversight committee. So, this is just up for discussion. We question whether the logic of either having three oversight committees or just one with single use, or one committee that would oversee all of the restricted use funds might be appropriate.
Yeah, this one's a little more complicated. To me, in the case of, say, there's an event that has applied, applied to you guys for a grant, but they are also getting money from the chamber through the DMO for advertising, my sense on that is good on them for figuring that out because that just makes a better event, as far as I'm concerned. If it feels like more money is coming from the city, it's not. It's coming from the tourism dollars that are meant for that kind of event to happen. If it seems like we need to have a little accounting oversight mixed in there, I don't know. I, that, that's a question I don't quite, how to figure that one out.
It might be one you'd want the council to weigh in on as well because what we're trying to do is make a clear distinction between policymaking and then oversight to try to separate those two. And that might be appropriate for the city, but that's one of the ideas that came up in our meetings to discuss.
Of course, and you have, you also have that weird separation of the fact that an event will be advertised by the chamber because it's advertising for an event, and it might not be in the event's expense. So, you know, how do you overlap with those two?
We're seeing, for instance, Stormy Weather Arts Festival coming up. The advertising budget for the chamber, who is our DMO, is essentially dedicating no more than daily operations, but doing no particular promotion of that. They're seeing that falling on the shoulders of a different applicant who may or may not We feel the committee may have some perspective to determine how well we might be promoting all of the aspects of the city to weigh in, to remind our DMO of what is actually going to work for the city. That's the beauty of, that I see with the makeup of our committee, with the community members large chosen for broad perspectives. And though all of us do have ties to other organizations in town, that doesn't seem to be, you know, the dominant thought in anyone's mind on the committee of trying to figure out what's best for community image promotion.
Jim, in this case, would you see yourself, or would you see your committee making recommendations in how that DMO money should be spent by the chamber?
They're, yeah, only, yeah, and they are only recommendations. But we, we might be able to point out areas that are imbalanced, and it might be, you know, a better utilization and more efficient. We're after efficiency in the funds.
Somebody at the $10,000 foot level instead of these little places.
So, that's an issue that we want to plant in your brains to think about for consideration. Because we are, we're trying to take a pretty long-term view of this, not just, you know, one-year response, because we want to be able to have a stable system set up that can be ongoing even when we go through changes in membership on our committee and changes anywhere in the city. So, we are looking to build something that is a good workable system. So, we'll always raise questions.
So, Jim, the events that the chamber has now is Sandcastle, Stormy Weather, and what else?
Fat Bike.
Yeah, the Fat Bike is occurring in October. They've had a food event with, the modification this year of the Culinary Festival. They had a very strong presence there. Although this year, there's no budget for promotion of Stormy Weather Arts Festival. I'm not sure that anyone has a clear message for that one yet either because I don't see any of us inviting a large cohort to town to come be shoulder to shoulder with anyone.
Yeah. Have you discussed with the chamber at all how they feel about this?
Well, there, there will be no, no concert sitting on the chamber's Stormy Weather Arts Festival committee, the members from the gallery group, myself and Joe Clayton from Bronze Coast Gallery. They have made it clear that they're not going to be doing any particular messaging about that event and that they're going to rely on the galleries. I mean, because the chamber doesn't see its opportunity to go forward as a fundraising effort as it has been traditionally, but that, it's just not working out for them. So, they're almost set out of, of the event.
Thank you for that explanation. I think it's.
Is that because of the COVID? Or is this going to be an ongoing situation?
Ongoing. They've not, they've been unable to generate ideas to make it the fundraiser that it at one time was.
Oh.
So, we'll see changes in strategy. And though a lot of my personal perspectives are coming because of my membership in the gallery group, there are all these other committee members who have very different perspectives than I do. And believe me, they hold my feet to the fire. And believe me, they hold my feet to the fire, and would have input for the Chamber, or any organization we're involved with that is trying to do promotions of town.
Do you see the gallery group taking that over, then?
That's been kind of the de facto situation for the last couple of years, but we will have to wait and see what happens with the gallery group. There are two members who are gone this year. Sharon Amber is closing her operation at the end of this month. She's done. An imprint gallery has moved to Astoria, and we will have to wait to see even what the gallery group puts together as a promotion. But it will definitely be a change in messaging. It's not going to be the same traditional come-to-town, or it might be future-oriented. But that may be true of all sorts of promotional messaging going forward. We kind of expect everyone to have to adapt to COVID, not only to the restrictions, but to redesign the nature of events. And so we'll be having discussions with each applicant about how they have, in fact, made adaptations, that's in fact on the new form, application form, how they will respond to COVID restrictions and comply with them. But we see, you know, the potential for a lot of events to have to change, so there should be a discussion with any applicant doing promotional things for town, that will be deeply engaged in conversations with, probably finding ourselves making recommendations. Suggest that we should not recommend amounts.
Can I jump in on your, just playing a kind of a dress?
This is, you know, one of the strengths of our committee. When I get off track, somebody, Greg, right suite for us?
Come on there. You can come up here to the secret particular.
Okay. The question at hand was, the committee felt that it would be best to use the experience of the seven members of the committee for more than just events. And each year, whether it be Git Lit, or a yoga festival, or the cottage tours, or whatever, we kind of follow the same procedure and script, and are you, is it efficient, is it making money, is it bringing people to town, is it doing what it's supposed to do? But if you step back and you look at what the city's doing, in 2010, it's got the 170% of 1%, and then 2015, it got another 70% of 1%. And then in 2019, the county created 170% of, so now you've got three spigots of money, all restricted by the same state law, which this committee is really kind of meant to uphold and do, but started in 2010 as just events. So now in a COVID world, we're probably for the next year, maybe two, not going to be really looking at having events so much. So the discussion about, as a committee, can we use these funds as they're allowed in ORIS 320, the state law, to improve our product? Which is a perfect example of that, was the van shell thing. We didn't have our ducks in a row to use these restricted funds to do that, so we ended up using park funds. But I would think that the committee and the community, anytime we can do anything to better the community with these restricted funds, we should use those first, because for restricted funds, you want to be able to use them, you know, how you can appropriately, rather than your unrestricted tax dollars. So that is kind of why we are putting this out there, to have the committee think about that, because when we get together, we think about that, not just on an event that's bringing people to town, but if bettering the product of the town, whether that be, I don't know what it is, you know, whatever that thing is that you can invest in, that betterers not only visitors who come to enjoy it, but also the year-round residents can enjoy it too, in case you point the van shell. There's others, and Clutchy Creek thing, you know, was one that was along those lines. So we're broadening the scope of what we want to be looking at as a committee, but within the guidelines of what it was originally set up for as well. And there'll be a day in the future where there's a fourth spigot of money that is restricted by the same state law unless that changes. And so we were talking, I mean, we're taking in that big picture, stepping back and looking at it, and like now, if you do look at it, a lot of that money goes to the DMO, which is the Chamber, and I'm on the Chamber Board right now, on full disclosure, but it also goes to individuals for each event. And at the end of the day, the City of Cannon Beach is spending a lot on advertising. And there's some efficiencies and economies of scale that could be handled, if there was a group looking at it as a big picture or on behalf of the city, which we kind of think the committee could do that.
Greg, as president of the Chamber Board, how do you feel about this proposal of undergoing oversight by the commission?
So there are only seven more months, but who's counting? I'm all for it. I've been a very big proponent of that, of what we're talking about right here, because as a community, we didn't have anything when we, when the second spigot of money was turned on in 2015, there was no oversight for that. When the third one came by the county, there was no oversight for that. The people on the current Tourist Marketing Commission committee are entrepreneurs, they're artists, they're business people, they're, you know, that's what they do, and there's marketing background and experience. And so to me, it actually takes the onus off the council and the city staff in some cases. We don't make the decision, we just recommend it, have oversight, and see, but we're very familiar with how it is, and what's efficient for the city, and in some cases, it might be off base, and that's ultimately up to the council to decide. But having some oversight as a committee that's involved in that, and we see that it takes some burden off the council, to some extent, or at least I, that's my opinion, and so I'm totally for it. I think, you know, as an organization, of two organizations, and even before the people sitting in this council, the Chamber has said, hey, we've got this report, we want to talk to you about multiple times, and there's never time, we're too busy, or getting 16 people together is always tough, and so, you know, bring it before the Tourist Marketing Commission to vet it out, and then push it on the council, it's kind of the idea or the thought process there. So I'm totally for it, to answer your question, Andy. And eight months from now, when I'm not on the Chamber, I would want to be involved in something like that, that whether, because the Chamber just acts as the DMO and the marketing and other cities, like Seaside, they do it internally in the city staff, and other cities go off of a third-party marketing company, which is kind of essentially what we've done here. If someday that's not the right relationship, and you want to go to a professional outfit that then does it, you know, it might be between the red method, or not.
One of the things that I'm not hearing, the origin of Tourism and Arts Committee was to maintain arts and the ability to spend that money. So I'm a little leery of, not leery, but I'm not hearing the fact that the arts component is supposed to be a group of folks that can balance the difficulty of tourist-oriented events, but trying to keep them within the arts realm. That I'm not hearing, I'm feeling like, okay, it's all events and advertising events, and so I'm a little concerned about that. That's one comment, for discussion. I'm just going back to history, and I know things change from when we started all this. The other one is, when it comes to the third spigot, that Greg calls it, the new, the council is the oversight on that one, that is facilities, just what we have talked about here so far. And now that we have a chance and a possibility of putting it somewhere, that's where the focus is going to be, at least until we change our mind. So right now, that spigot, in my sense, is focused. It doesn't really need other oversight, other than where we're going to put it. So, two comments, that's all.
Any responses?
Sure.
One of the mandates we have is heads and beds, which goes beyond, and the recommendations we have made have that in view, and go beyond just the arts. Clutchy Creek was mentioned. During the Fat Bike event, the Chamber event in October, they have plans to utilize Clutchy Creek. They're going to be sending out groups of no more than 10 riders at a time, spaced intervals, to use that facility as part of the event that the Chamber is promoting for town. The committee saw that as an asset that was going to draw specifically heads and beds to town, which is also part of our mandate, as well as supporting the arts in general. The committee might have a better opportunity to oversee the DMO's percentage of promotion of all of the aspects of town, including the arts, which they're currently pretty much leaving in the hands of the gallery group. But I see those as two separate, two different ways of approaching promoting things, with inevitably two different target markets and audiences.
And I remember that discussion from the beginning, because the heads and beds conundrum compared to the arts, how do you get to both? And we have done that with some events, and some events we haven't. But I think the whole idea was to put an attempt to make sure that we had the arts involved somehow in every event. I think we've done a very good job at that, personally, so. Anybody else have any concerns? We can move on to your other comments, if you want.
I think we as a council are going to need a lot of discussion on this point.
Yeah, this is going to be a, we'll get our.
Budget allocations. I hear oversight, and this discussion, it sounds like it's coordinated. And there is a real difference in my mind between oversight and roll, or coordinated roll. Kind of like there's a need for some coordination, when it comes to the advertising and promotion. I'm a little concerned about setting up a role of the TAP Committee overseeing what the Chamber does, when the city has a contract with the Chamber, and that requires the city to be the oversight, and have a court of duty with the Chamber. So coordinate promotion and advertising, you have to get that. But oversight on the Chamber, and the city currently has that, through a contract, I find that seems very cumbersome, and we stand. I think we need a lot more discussion, and I agree with Sam. I'd like to see some way to get more emphasis on this, on the art, and the image of Cannon Beach as an arts community, not a voting event, so. I understand beds, heads and beds, that's part of the law, you've got to attract people. But I want to feel like we've been giving up on trying to attract people to come and enjoy the arts, the arts community. I'd like to see this.
Well, we wanted to bring these issues to your attention for consideration, because we do go round and round on our committee with these issues raised, questioning if those restricted funds are appropriately used. And we will always have opinions and make recommendations to you. Anything else?
I think there's, do you have two others, two or three others to talk about?
Well, the discussion seemed to make the final points.
What about number five, Jim?
Oh, yeah, we are actually, we made a recommendation, asking the city to send out a reminder to our membership about possible nonperformance of duties. Just a general reminder going out number one, about any three missed meetings without an excuse might constitute nonperformance of duty, but the committee wants to recognize that particular standard, and we're looking for reinforcement, for a reminder to all of our membership, that since the committee meets with generally nearly complete attendance, we expect complete attendance. So this is pretty much just an enforcement issue, that we've asked the city to put a reminder out, so we can have it as a broad reminder for every participant on the committee.
Tell me, Jim, you say you have a voting meeting and a non-voting meeting? What are your, do you designate certain meetings as ones that do something for voting?
Well, our schedule was actually laid out with guidance from the city manager, suggesting that if there were going to be any changes adopted to get proper notice, we would have to identify meetings in that fashion, to give, to enable the council to do any, make responses.
And Sam, there's also the part that, and this is my mistake, is I wrote this, or drafted it for Jim, but that people might show up for the meetings where they vote on the dollars, but not attend any of the meetings where issues are being raised, problems being solved, that sort of thing. So that, instead of voting, they should have been voting on funding, and I apologize for the mistake.
When you'd be having presentations, is that what you're talking about, is, you know, when you have a couple days of presentations, people might not attend those, but then show up for the vote? Is that what you're talking about?
That's a possibility. We also have a discussion meeting, we discuss those applications, and then vote at a later meeting. So we want to be sure that everyone is there involved in all of the discussions, all the considerations, as an expectation of their duties on the day.
Are your schedules flexible enough so that you can adjust them? I know with the council, we kind of work, if somebody can't do something, we even consider another time, or a situation like that, which might accommodate some of the people who are on your committee are full-time workers, so.
Generally, we've worked out with accommodation, but we've had one member this year in particular who simply has not shown up.
Okay, and my sense on that part, if somebody's just not showing up to the meetings, it's the chairman's full freedom to say, okay, you're done, within the appearance of how our rulebook says.
Yeah, right.
So that's my sense, and I would give, from the city council, full power to the chairman to say that. The other thing is, if the voting on certain items is the only thing that they're trying to do, you could either make every meeting a voting meeting, so they don't know which one is which, I doubt that would work. Look at your systems so that it's not a voted-end product, maybe it's a qualified product through a value system that everybody submits, or something like that, instead of a vote. And all you'd have to do at the end of that is then vote to agree, to pass it on to the council.
That's the specific vote we're really talking about.
Okay, if they're waiting.
Final recommendations, where we tally the amounts, and make our final recommendations to council.
Okay. Well, Chris?
Yeah, Mr. May, while we're still on number five, specifically, section 2.32.070, removal from office, a member of the commission may be removed by the city council after a hearing for misconduct or nonperformance of duty. So I think the recommendation would come from the committee, council or commission, and then come to you. I don't know if that's something you could delegate to the chair, but.
No, I mean, the chair would bring it to us.
Sure, okay, because we can all.
The chair would say, I've got somebody that's not. The chair would say, I've got somebody that's not performing.
Yeah, okay.
That comes to us and then we would have to adjudicate it somehow.
Good. Also one, last item, which I call number six, which is when there's, an issue comes up with the committee that matches the mission, but there's not a 501(c) associated with it, 501(c)(3) or six or whatever the number's supposed to be, is it advisable or acceptable to allow the committee to say, we will use the funds for this? Essentially becoming the applicant without being a 501(c)(3). If you remember, actually the 501(c)(3) requirement precluded the city from using these funds for a function that is clearly in line with the mission.
I like the 501(c)(3) piece. It kind of keeps the arts in perspective. And I have noticed how nicely that some of the groups have found someone to work with them that complements what their mission is for the art. I.
I'm not sure all of them complement the mission.
That becomes a question whether or not the administrative costs going through the nonprofit become a drag on the utilization, efficient use of your money. And that can sometimes be thousands of dollars that do end up in a nonprofit's budget but don't necessarily contribute a very strong outcome for the city's funds. This came up when, like, one of the committee members came up with the idea of the electrical outlet advancement. We had no particular mechanism, so we made an outrageous recommendation. And it ended up being acted upon utilizing some other funds, not ours, but we were looking for an ability to generate ideas that we think would be beneficial to the city. And though our current, currently we're locked into the, the structure of going with a nonprofit organization. We can see the potential for making recommendations for city projects that really directly would involve facilities and/or even programs that would promote at least one aspect of the state law of either heads and beds, whether it's specifically arts or not.
So these, these would be.
That's actually, it's a pretty big thing in terms of the state law from the perspective of our, of our committee.
These would be projects just originating from the committee itself?
Conceivably.
Yeah.
Well, the idea of, of the nonprofits was to obviously generate some funding sources for the nonprofits. As originally conceived, they were nonprofits that serve Cannon Beach and serve the arts, serve, you know, like you said, they complement. And I think there's also a requirement that they administer that and they get some funding for their administration.
I think that was one aspect of it, but I thought that whole construct was put together as a mechanism to avoid the, the putting everything out for contracts with time limits as an expedient to allow the usage of the funds.
That's what the city attorney told us.
Yeah.
I would, I would be comfortable to explore the idea of the committee, you know, saying, okay, we've got a really cool idea we want to promote. Let's earmark a chunk of these funds for that idea and then bring it to the council and say, hey, this is what we would think would be really good for this. Then the council and the committee together could then shop for either a 501(c)(3) or figure out some other entity that we would be comfortable with using to present it. So the council has the ability to override a little bit of your regulation.
Oh, yeah, we sort of figure the council has the ability to override anything we do.
Yeah, but I mean, at least we then would combine heads and figure out a way to use that new good idea.
That sounds like a reasonable notion to, you know.
And that gives you guys a chance to just brainstorm.
Yeah.
And not worry about how it's going to get done. Just say, okay, this is a kind of a fun project, it's going to cost this much, let's chunk this, that money out of the grant system and let's see if anybody else will follow it.
And we will try to brainstorm artistically.
Yeah. And that would, you know, that probably would be one of the more convenient, clever ways of using that committee. That's my sense of it, because we've got some good brains there.
Because we're, we're pretty ready to be used.
I know. Okay, thanks, Jim.
Thank you very much and all the committee members for coming up tonight.
Can I?
You haven't heard the last of us.
Okay, please.
Can I do a summary so I make sure that.
Sure.
Get you what you're looking for? Item number one, there was, I think that was generally no, you're not as comfortable with the tech coming up or revising the application amounts, that sort of thing. Is that correct? Okay. Number two, you were okay with the limitation or some sort of a limitation? Don't recall if it was the amount that was requested or if you were asking the committee to develop that as their own rule.
My sense of it was number one kind of solved number two because it's the amount, if somebody is using dollar amounts to influence the decision, if they're as a member not allowed to increase the dollar that's asked, this is moot.
I think, yeah, I understand, and I don't think that the number would be higher than what was requested, but if each of you said a thousand dollars and the request was, you know, five thousand, but y'all said a thousand, so that's the average. If I say twenty thousand, then we're going to divide that and it gets much higher. So that's, that's where we're talking about having a limitation. So that's different because this is on a vote, Sam. Ultimately, you would not be able to skew it higher than what was, was requested, but it would be possible to skew a number by just putting in something higher to change the average.
To me, as long as it's under the asked amount or the asked amount, that's legitimate. If I really think that the girl, you know, the ten thousand that they ask for is pertinent to the ask, that's a legitimate amount that I would, could put in. I wouldn't be able to go fifteen because that would be going way over. If I didn't like the, the project and I said zero, that's legitimate.
Like I said, what I'm saying and I might have to explain myself well, that in this case, they might have asked for ten, but in order to get the number up, I might say twenty-five or thirty so that when you average.
No, we're saying you can't.
Can't do that.
Okay, that's fine. So, so there is a limitation and a limitation would be the amount that was requested. Okay, great, good, good. Just wasn't sure how you were going to do it, okay? Number three, the multiple buckets, there was no action on that. There was a question about, you know, making sure that we focus on promoting the arts. Does that one, that you want to say bring to a workshop or is that something maybe when we talk about it at budget time?
Um, budget time, that's a long ways away.
It's not.
Feels like it.
Yeah.
I think we need some work session on.
Big retreat is the topic.
Okay. Okay, with retreat?
Yeah, and even to the point of it would be nice maybe to do a retreat with the committee to have some freedom to really, to storm ourself.
Four, we didn't discuss, but I think what Jim said was it kind of, based on the conversation for number three, might I correct that, Jim?
We just briefly touched on it.
Might that be part of the retreat discussion?
It would be, would have to be.
Okay. But the information item, if they have a problem with attendance, then they will bring it, you know, to the, to the council and then we will follow the process. And then as far as generating their own ideas, the way that the mayor explained it, I don't know if anybody reacted to it, but it was, if there is something that they think would be good to bring it to council, if council agrees, something that it would be worth doing, that if we're going to use those funds, we would use, we would try to find a 501(c)(3) or we can always do what we did this last time, which was go to the general fund because we thought it was worth doing. But as far as using those funds, it would be bring it to council and then we would look for a 501(c)(3) if we want to use those funds. Is that correct?
Item four also addresses that same point.
Well, if I write something up that says this, committee.
Is there agreement with what I just raised? That sounded good.
Okay, all right. And then we'll kind of act on that. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Great.
And thank you to the commission. They're doing some good work in crazy times as everybody else does, but they're making good adjustments.
Yeah.
Doing good work.
Tough job.
Moving on to our next topic, beach fireworks. My name is Gene Heller.
Living Wall.
Living Wall.
Living.
Living Wall.
Living Wall's next, I'm sorry.
Trying to avoid that.
I'm fine going to number three.
Me too.
Living Wall, sorry, that's Jeff.
Mayor Council, thank you. Jeff Adams, the development director for all those down in Vineland.
Can I interrupt you for just a minute? I've had a conversation with people who are trying to hear on Zoom and they can't hear when people are sitting at the table.
Can they hear me at all? Can you?
I can hear it, but it's not great.
Where should we, uh?
I, I don't know.
Yeah, if you go closer to podium, that would probably work.
So you can use the microphone, it'll get feedback?
Yeah.
I don't know if that helps or not, but.
Yeah, so, yeah, that, that should pick up a bit. So I'm here to speak tonight about Cannon Beach Preservation Subdivision, Living Wall, planning permission, the rest of the recommendation on that. And I don't want to speak alone because I want to hand it over to the planning commission to present their recommendation. I just want to touch on a couple of points before I introduce it. And then when Darryl Johnson, our injured chair, gives a report and he wants any of the other planning commission members to allow them, say want to speak. But on this subject, I just want to touch on a couple of things that I think are important. I was asked by the planning commission at a, this part of the discussion item, to look into the living wall. So the sit-in land use attorney, Bill Bryton and myself looked into it and we were asked to produce a monitoring report and that was then given to them for their recommendation and referred to you tonight. You know, there's, there's been a long history with the, with Austin Callen Nicholson Plan Development, the actual flat test Cannon Beach Preservation Subdivision, so that's what I've been going by. So, but there, that history, you know, when a plan development's done and have the ordinance said, a, a development agreement or an HOA and things are supposed to be set up, some of those things weren't done. And that's highlighted in my report and then to the recommendation. But where do we go from here? And that, that's been the conversation of that planning mission and then what, what we need to do in the future. And there's, the main point is that Mr. Nicholson has left the communities, left the development. And so now we have property owners there that I truly believe are wanting to do, work with the city on to improve that living wall. I've had conversations with each one of the parties and all of them agree. We, we didn't know it was such a big issue, such a big problem because some of them don't even, currently live in the community. They're, they're getting ready to build there and we're in the middle of starting the process, building from its own base. And so they want to be members of this community. They want to be involved in whatever they can and make their community of what it can be. So those are the points I, I want to bring up in, in my report, my monitoring report and the recommendation, I think reflects that. And so I'm willing to work on this and do what we need to do to work with all parties to get this done. So I'd like to hand over to Darryl. I'll get around to do kind of the summary of what you guys want us to do next and answer any other questions that might happen. So Darryl, if you'd like to. It's actually easier for me to stand up. Do I really need to sign out? Okay, Darryl Johnson, chairman of the planning commission meeting. I wanted to start with the fact that you've had several meetings here and the city staff from time to time has emphasized what a strong partnership you have with the city staff. And I just wanted to remind you that I probably see that a little differently. When I was curator for the Rose Garden for eighteen years, I could always rely on the staff that we have. And in that time, I only hired one person. But I really look at the city staff in a different way. And that is, my feeling is the team that I worked with last at the garden included all of the park bureau staff, but I really felt like the other half of the staff was really the community, the neighborhood people that lived in the, around the Rose Garden and the visitors that came to Rose Garden. And of course, that other last half is much more of a challenge, I think, than working with the state city staff. So now we've come to the point with the Nicholson Development Project where the, the planners, I mean, the planning commission during those probably close to two years, in almost every vote that we made, it was a unanimous vote to turn down that development. And one of the significant parts of that development was the slope density requirement. If that piece of parcel had not been overturned by the city council, they would have only had one residence in that parcel. By overturning that, of course, they were able to build or could build four houses up there. And I think the whole motivation of that project was money. They, they wanted to develop it, they wanted to sell it, they want to make money, and they really were not interested in the community. So I felt it was very disappointing that that got overturned. And, you know, the, the other thing that, that during those meetings, the retainer wall came up from time to time. And early on, I suggested that the retainer wall be a wall made out of concrete or whatever, but be faced with natural stone, which would have blended into the landscape in. have blended into the landscape in that area. We wouldn't be talking about this retainer wall with pockets in it right now if something like that had been made. But, of course, their bottom line was profit. They were not going to spend that kind of money on the wall that looked good, when they could do it cheaper. One of the other things that bothered me much about that project was, um, the, the value of the trees that were on that slope. If you look at those two hundred-year-old citrus spruces that were cut down, if they, in terms of the earth place, the resistance from those trees would stabilize that sandy hillside tremendously. Today, they're gone, and there was no value given to, to those trees. And as a landscaper, those trees are worth hundreds of thousands of dollars, but that wasn't in the interest of theirs. So, in addition to cutting down those trees, the other, the other thing that, that was really noticeable was, um, the evergreen trees to the east of the Nicholson Project, um, were pruned up in the middle of the trees, which was a huge mistake. I mean, you're basically ruining, uh, the natural beauty of those trees, but they did it just because they wanted a view of the ocean. In our last Planning Commission meeting, our land use attorney emphasized that where we are now with this project is in the framework of the contract. And in the framework of that contract is the living wall. And to those of us that object to the wall that's there now, um, that, um, that project could have been enhanced in a lot of different ways, but we have to work within that perimeter. So, in that perimeter is the living wall, and the living wall should cover, uh, the retainer wall that you're looking at right now. And in addition to that, the contract said that you should have a professional person, a maintenance person, that would maintain and fertilize, or whatever you need to do, water that, that those plants, so that it would cover that wall. What we see mainly in those pockets are sword ferns. On the north side of the Waycrest, I've had sword ferns living in the soil for three decades. No amount of fertilizer is going to get a certain sword fern to grow six feet tall. It's not going to do it. So, they never selected the plant material that should have been selected that would cover that retainer wall. It was never done. Um, so, my feeling is, various members of the Planning Commission, neighbors in that, that neighborhood, are not satisfied with what they're saying. That obligation was never met, and it should be met. I turned over some suggestions to Jeff on the last meeting about plant material that I think would work well. There were a couple of huckleberry, native huckleberry plants that I gave the most to also. There were many other solutions, other, uh, varieties of plants that would probably do well in that situation. Arbutus, which is a commonly called a strawberry tree. We grew up in Washington Park, and it does quite well here in our climate and surrounding everything. One of the things that, um, the neighbor said planted is clematis. Up at the top of the railing, they put clematis in there. Well, clematis is a hardy cranial plant. It dies down in the winter. So, I don't know what they're trying to do. If they're trying to beautify the, the retain, I mean, the railing, but it's not the proper plant to be planted there for that sort of thing. So, I think what the Planning Commission would like to see the city council do is to address the needs of what a living wall is, use some of these plant materials that I suggested, so that we cover the wall that's there now, and the plant material that they've used will never cover it satisfactorily. So, that's what I have to say, correct?
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jeff, a question I have is, as you said, it's now new property owners. Um, do you all begin in the section that's kind of a common ownership, or?
Probably under the contract. So, um, you know, the planning, uh, plan development standards really require a HOA, homeowners association to take ownership of that and, you know, work with that. Uh, that, that didn't happen, and hasn't happened. But I've spoken with all the parties, and they've engaged a order out for them to specialize in HOAs to accomplish that, and so they're working on the language to do that. Uh, so then they will be responsible for doing that, because that's why you set these up, and why you have to develop an agreement, because often that developer does leave usually within a year. Uh, and so, what is the party that's going to take over that and be responsible and work with the city for that kind of oversight? And so, uh, they've done that. They've, uh, is it Janaya or Janice, uh, more landscaper, local landscaper?
Janai.
Yeah, Janai. So, uh, they're, they're working with her to get a new plant list together, to assess it and do a new plant list, um, and, um, and then work on a plan for monitoring plans, work with the city. So, you know, those are the three things, I think, that we've kind of had brought out in the recommendations that were brought out. These are the main, you know, the HOA, an assessment, and a new planting plan, and then a timeline for that monitoring to accomplish certain landmarks, if you will, or benchmarks of growth. So, um, you know, I, I, I don't know, um, you know, what kind of action I don't know, where to want to go out of this, but that's, those are kind of the three points we were looking forward in the recommendations. And, and I know, speaking with the property owners, that's what they're working for as well.
Okay. Um, when they get an HOA put together, do we get to see that, or is that just their, their own cooperation?
I mean, it is, it is their own. The FIPS reported with the county, and, um, you know, I spoke with Mr. Shepherd today, and he said, you know, hey, he's willing to send us, you know, update us on each one of these. So, and I said, I can pull back to you guys when we get these benchmarks, you know.
Approved by the state, too. Well, I was, um, I know that Kennedy Shepherd and Andrea Georges have been involved with the family house there forever. So, they understand the workings of the neighborhood and the, uh, village feel that everyone, um, would like to see. Um, and I think I can visualize Shirley Gillis painting, painting, painting the wall, if she were with us. So, anyway, um, I'm really relying on them to guide the other people who are in the HOA to do what's left.
I, I've also spoken with the Harden Van Rits and the Genies, and, you know, the Genies will have a, you know, a building permit that the application is in, it's being issued. And so, they will be constructing there, and I know they're really excited to give color to the community as well, and, and they work, uh, some taxes in the world, quite a bit with, um, you know, these, uh, trees and preservation there. So, I know they're wanting to be members of this community.
I have a couple of, I guess, one, one is a kind of a dumb question, and that is, what the heck is the wall there for in the first place?
Of retaining, retention, you know, I said, that, that, that geography or geology is shifting things, and, and so it's, uh, you know, not the best for sword, so.
So, were there piers that were put into the ground to hold the ground?
Yeah, I would assume. I, I was a year during that, I, I-
I think they go back into the ground.
Yeah.
It's anchors.
Okay.
They hold up the roof.
Okay.
And the trees would have supported it if they had not been taken out.
Yeah. The other question I have is, um, you say there, there are going to be new plantings, uh, beyond what, are they going to take out the sword ferns and all the ferns and put in new plantings that might go with Daryl's?
I think, yeah.
Planting list?
That's been the recommendation to them. I haven't seen the plans yet, but I know that that's what they hire, uh, contractors to do, to look at that and, uh, get them and assessment of what plantings would fill that in, you know. I think like, uh, the Planning Commission emphasized, you know, they may all be living, and they may all be in good health and condition right now. It's just not the right type of thing. So, what's the, what's the mix that will help that or make that work, to make it a green wall?
Is there any kind of written agreement or written contract with this new landscaper that they can, people can point to and say, okay, these are what you have agreed to, these are the timelines, this is what we expect?
We don't have that yet. No, that's-
Are we going to get one?
We haven't, we haven't done that, and, you know, um, whether the city can require that, you know, I, I don't think the, the land use, city land use attorney Bill not, doesn't, he doesn't even know if that's truly our role is anymore, because the initial agreements weren't, uh-
But wasn't it an, an, one of the conditions?
Didn't have the conditions.
Yes, but to have that, um, agreement in place. Now, there, there was, uh, an initial of the agreement or the recommendation. You will see that there were the plant lists submitted, and that's what we signed up when we agreed the, uh, the conditions and everything else of those plans. Uh, but that plant list hasn't been adhered to, you know, there, there's a difference. And whether that plant list is really the best plant list for what will grow there, I don't think that was ever really assessed either. So, that's why I think the new contractor, a local contractor, has a much better, uh, ability to assess that and instead what, what.
But, but what I'm asking is, wasn't one of the recommend, original recommendations, it was to have a contract with the landscaper to do the planting and make sure that the wall was covered the way it was supposed to be? And if, if it was one of the recommendations, then it would be, I would think, one of the city's roles to make sure that that happens this time.
Yeah. Uh, you know, so, a contractor was, um, you know, hired, and he did plant it. He did not, you know, plant the plants that were required. And so, whether we can, say, you know, you have to do, abide by a new one with a new development, uh, you know, a new plant, that's where the, you know, we're-
To me, they violated the, the, and it wasn't planted for four years, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I don't know.
Because the, the, the sale, uh, the receipt says two thousand sixteen, November twelfth, two thousand sixteen, and it hasn't been planted, it wasn't planted until this year, right? So, that's four years.
Yeah. Well, it was, I think it was planted prior to my company, so I don't know. You know, it, it, because Mark showed me that wall when I did my first tour of this, and, you know, it was growing, but it wasn't, you know, inverted, it didn't happen. So, that's two years.
Well, can we, can we request that the new, uh, landscaper talk to Daryl and get some kind of a planting list?
Yeah, that's what, you know, and I think they're, that's what they're willing to do, and that's what they're going to do. So, um, I'm happy to follow up on this, to, to, you know, report back to you guys, whether it's quarterly, or, you know, I just don't think you're going to get a lot of planting done, at least for a few months, you know. So, we, uh, hit the fall or bring the seeds and things like that, and, you know, anything. So, we're not going to really get a full growth until fall or this time next year. But I'm happy to report back on, you know, HOA projects, or, do they have some contractors that are going to, so I can ask you some of those.
So, Lisa Kerr has wanted to-
Okay.
Hello? Can you hear me? Oh, um, I think that what-
Hello?
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 Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. I, I think that what the Planning Commission, my take on what they wanted was an agreement, not just, oh, we're going to rely on them to do the right thing because they're great people. That may be true, but I think what we wanted to see was to have the contract honored, and the original contract was not honored, because that was not a licensed certified landscaper who did that first analysis of what plant should go in. So, the contract was never honored, it was never completed, and that's all we're asking. And I don't think that that's really a huge onus on the landowners, to hire somebody to come in and do it, and for the city to require it, and for them to monitor it. The contract's there, it's simple. I don't understand, I, I don't understand, Jeff, your reticence to, um, make a requirement of it, and to just rely on the, on the goodness of people. I mean, I think that's a, a nice, a nice attitude, but I think in this case, that the plant, my impression was the Planning Commission would prefer to see it made a requirement and to be monitored like any other contract.
Thanks, Lisa. Um, my sense is a contract is a requirement. I mean, there is a rule of law behind a contract. So, as soon as they have representation as far as a homeowners' association, because now we have new owners, um, we can then connect directly with the homeowners' association and work out the details of what the contract says. So, I don't have the contract in front of me, so I don't know how detailed it is. Um, I'm relying on Jeff to, um, ferret that out, and if we need to talk to Bill, um, to get some law behind it. Um, and if that is too weak, then it comes to the council, and we have to figure out some sort of way to put a thumbscrew down and get some plants planted. A handful of seeds and start throwing them at it. And I'd say, I'd say no more building permits should be issued without having that in place.
That's a great idea.
We currently have a building permit issued and one, uh-
What are they? Whose are they?
We have a building permit for a new resident on the Genie that has the much, you know, and, uh, you know, we have one for a, uh, new resident on the Harding.
What's that one?
Uh, new residential building permit.
Are they tearing down their house and building another one, or?
Um, they own, uh-
Oh, they own one of the lots?
Which lot?
Uh, the one, uh, just, uh, the Genie owns lot one, uh-
One here in the east?
It was the one that, uh, the, the one where the Harding garage is. And then you have the, uh, one closest to, which would be our, the northwest one, number four. Excuse me, northeast. Yeah, so it would be northwest, north east, thirty.
So, it's lot number four. They want, giving them a permit to build down in that hole?
They want, giving them a permit to build down in that hole?
We haven't, no, we haven't.
Well, we have an application. Cause they, they're not allowed to have any street access on the wall.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, when we're talking about, you know, requirements and all those things, I think that the time that has gone by is an issue for the city. I think also that, um, if we're talking about making requirements, uh, there was a requirement for the plant material. And so we're kind of glittily saying, we're gonna make a new requirement to go ahead and change the plant material. So that's why we're working with the current owners because, you know, we're kind of tied up. And my, I, I'm concerned that if we make a requirement on this property for something that has been going on for four years, um, I think that we might have some issues as far as, uh, uh, not being even handed. Uh, if there's not a reason it's tied to that wall that we should not give a building permit or there's no reason why the, or the requirements of the building permit are met, I don't know if we can just say that because of this wall, we're not gonna issue a building permit. So I would be hesitant to, you know, recommend.
There, the requirement homeowners association group, and that agreement will address the living wall, and if those conditions haven't been met, why are we somehow obligated to go ahead and grant a building permit anyway? Makes no sense to me. This whole thing has made no sense to me. And I always have to say, I didn't vote to approve it. I don't want anybody thinking I ever thought this made any sense. And it still doesn't make sense. But to say, well, we've moved on, it's been a long time, the city hadn't followed through, therefore we should not follow through anymore, uh, just let them do what they want, that's what I'm hearing.
I do think that, you know, and we can have Bill speak to us, but I, I think you have to also look at it from someone who's bought a, uh, his property. And they believe that they have a right to build on the property. And then just because the city has not, uh, at that time, uh, held the, uh, property owners that initially started that property. Now, I've had this numerous times in passing here, did not, uh, find my HOA to then tell that property owner they can't build because they didn't, you know, that's not then when they buy a piece of property, uh, you know, misdirected and credit, I mean, when doing their, yeah, those HOA will come up if, if it's in place and if it's secured. If it's not, you know, do we have, go back and retro make, you know, I mean, I've lived in communities where there's fifty, sixty planned developments and, you know, many of them did never accomplish what they were supposed to do with that contractor, that sort of agreement. And so I think that that's the danger that I would, you know, I would refer to Bill or Ashley on this, not me and not, you know, anyone else. Because that right there, that's a different thing when someone has bought a piece of property and they believe they have buildings, a right to build on that property, then to tell them, oh, wait, before you do that, you have to come into HOA now, uh, risk any of that.
There's a requirement at times when the developer of the property, um, sells a certain percentage of the property, and at that point, it becomes a duty of the homeowners to create an HOA. And I think that's where we're having some issues. And just because it's an excuse, it shouldn't be able to happen.
Yeah, and I, I would definitely defer to those legal folks to solve that before we start, you know, issuing the, you know, the...
Was the homeowners association required among the conditions of the development?
It's, it's part of the plan development standard. I don't think, you know, I don't know, I can go back and look at the conditions, which are required, one of the conditions, you know, that's part of the standard, it's part of the criteria to do a plan development.
So they, they didn't follow through in, in developing a, or creating a homeowners association at the time that the planned unit development was approved? Well, I think they need, I think there's a couple, at least a couple of things they haven't followed through on that need to be followed through before anything else goes on there.
I think we need to work, personally, I think we need to hope that they get the HOA set up as soon as possible. Um, I am reticent to penalize any one property owner for the problems that were prior and existing that are concerned for the HOA. I don't know how we can force the HOA, but, uh, to figure something out. But I would not penalize one property owner just because somebody else has done something wrong.
There are certain blocks, building blocks that you work with to make that all happen, and if they're not in place, then there should possibly be a moratorium or something until that actually, um, kicks in and then they can move forward.
I don't know the law about it, so again, I'm gonna go with Jeff and figure out if, uh, Ashley or...
But Jeff's not an attorney.
Jeff figures out if Ashley or Bill can figure out something for us. Um, so we need to ask, ask lawyers.
Can we get an opinion from Bill or Ashley, and/or Ashley?
Any else, anything?
Well, just that, um... Where we are now, we need to try to clean up what's there and make the walls more attractive and the preparation of the planning permission list, that's part of getting the HOA in place and that's where it's, um, acceptable, um, landscaping or planting list by a qualified person and move forward. That part I understand, the rest of it is just...
Okay. Thanks, Jeff. I'm gonna need a short break, five minutes. So, uh, background, obviously, this year was, uh, a busy, uh, busy weekend for Independence Day with being the busiest in the last eight years. And we've had a few discussions about already and several ideas have been brought up. Um, the recommendation we're looking for is, uh, just some direction from the council on how we want to proceed, whether we want to continue with the current rules, but more enforcement and volunteers, uh, similar to the attachment I had given from two thousand four when Chief Halliburton was here. Um, and that's something I had never seen until I started digging through because we weren't having the issue. So seeing, um, different ways of doing that where we have, we set up zones on the beach and, uh, get a certain amount of people there in each of the areas to enforce those. Um, currently, the fine is a maximum of twenty-five hundred dollars in circuit court, um, for fireworks citation. Um, the other option would be ban all legal and illegal fireworks on the beach and in town, which is what has been discussed as well. And then the third option would be raise fines for the fireworks and floating lanterns throughout the year, or a combination of those. And, uh, it's your guys' decision on what you want us to do. We're just looking for some direction so we can get started on how we want to proceed. And I know the fire chief's here as well to weigh in, um, because obviously it's an impact to the fire department as well.
Where does the five thousand come from?
Where the what?
Uh, five thousand, I had heard that.
That was just suggested at the beginning, um, you know, either five thousand or ten thousand to make it where it sticks and people, um, obey it, uh, you know, because that's where it usually will hurt them in the pocketbook. And that's certainly something that, uh, we did discuss with the city attorney, uh, Ashley, is that something that we can do or does that fit under cruel and unusual punishment? And she said that is based certainly on what we've seen, uh, locally and in Oregon with fires that have started based on fireworks, um, especially very close down in Manzanita, the house that was burnt down from fireworks that started, uh, on the beach. And then also the one in the, uh, Multnomah County Falls area that burnt acres and acres and acres down, um, and endangered lives as well. So she thinks, uh, that there wouldn't be a reason why we couldn't, um, raise the fine substantially based on those issues and the fire hazard.
You know, no matter what we do, we need to incorporate the definition of these, uh, floating lanterns, uh, those go all year round, every, every bleeding.
All year round, yeah. And there's the...
This time of year, they float towards, towards the dry hills.
Yeah.
It's ridiculous.
Yeah.
We did address that at the parks committee level, um, and decided not to allow them.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and Bart's here, I don't know if that helps to act that, but...
It always helps when Bart's here.
Many, many years ago. Yeah. Barely remember. Yeah.
And I don't, I don't believe it's an ordinance that...
No, and I think packing that in with the fireworks ordinance would be good where it's all one thing because it presents the same danger level.
People like to do it at weddings and things like that, man. But in a forest, a forest didn't really, not...
We had a bunch, and I showed some pictures to Jason, there wasn't a bad, a year ago now, were a bunch of them over in, uh, the popping and had landed over there, nothing got fired because it was, but there was a bunch of them. They had burned, and I collected a couple of, there's a couple of the city parking lot, I was not one of the dogs, but they, they themselves had burned, and they're not supposed to burn, they're fire retardant. Anyhow, uh, on the, on this, my sense is that I think increasing the fine would be a good, excellent first step. Incorporating some, uh, other means to, um, influence or pursue, uh, compliance, and that would be signage and, uh, if we need, like, public information officers to hand out, you know, even volunteers to go around that week ahead of time to do handout. Um, I think timing is something we should talk about so that it is, I don't, I'm, I'm not as comfortable with outlawing totally. I think what Oregon legal should be Oregon legal, that's my sense of it. State parks, it says the beach, nothing. Can't do anything on the beach, state parks. We followed that, we kind of guided them to that. So that's, that's fine with, for me. But I think we should still have that, the Oregon legal to be available. Um, I would like to, the timing issue would be, uh, nothing, maybe, if we could figure out a way to say no, no fireworks other than Fourth of July? I don't know, that one's, that one's an open discussion.
Other than what? I didn't hear you say.
On Fourth of July.
Oh.
Um...
Don't look with that.
Because there's always these lingering stalks that they have for the weeks after. Um, which didn't happen that much this year. Um, shoot, cost either. The other idea would be a curfew time period, so when, on the Fourth of July, they're done. And there's not this lingering popping that keeps going on until one o'clock in the morning. Yeah. Just see if we can figure that out. I don't know how much harder that would be to enforce than just the regular thing to enforce. I would love to create a way to use volunteers effectively, and, uh, I know we've got legal issues about what they can do. Sure. But I think there would be ways that people could help, um, even if it is just the information aspect of it or as spotters or whatever, we'll have to work that out. That's a finicky thing. Uh, the last idea I would talk about would be helping, and here's, just had Jim in the tech committee, figure out a better celebration of the Fourth that doesn't include Fourth of July, fireworks. We had some ideas pop up, like, uh, the fire dancers that have been here in the past, uh, see if we can bring them back. I know this year we couldn't do that. Um, maybe all laser light shows, you know, other things, even if it's just some sort of fair, something for people to do at that time that would normally be lighting off bars, so they're not doing that, concerts, something. And that would include getting the chamber involved, uh, tech committee and their whole new idea of thinking outside of the box. Uh, those are my ideas to get kind of the discussion started.
I think the five thousand dollars came from the, isn't it the state fine for, for lighting off fireworks on the...
For, uh, the top misdemeanor, maximum is five thousand.
Yeah, that's where the five thousand came from.
Yeah.
Jason, how difficult is it to enforce fireworks that are legal here versus, I mean, trying to, trying to separate fireworks that are legal versus fireworks that are not legal in town?
Well, talking with, uh, fire chief, uh, we just discussed this afternoon as well, and that just adds a whole nother fold to what we're trying to enforce. You know, our focus is on the, um, illegal, uh, fireworks. And so, you know, we're spreading our police force and/or volunteers to be in certain areas on the beach, uh, overlooking and certain areas in town. And this goes back to, uh, when Rich was the city manager and he's up on a rooftop, you know, watching for certain things. And so that was just for illegal fireworks, but then you tack on the families that come to town specifically to let the legal fireworks off, or even sparklers for that matter, and it just adds more work to us. Okay, now we gotta run over and get this one. And, uh, spreading the resources thinner, and I know that, uh, fire department will give us as much help as they can and, uh, also with, and they can help, uh, the enforcement end of it, and I love the idea of having volunteers and spotters. I just don't want to put anybody in harm's way, um, by putting them down there. And, you know, that's part of the issue in other cities where on the Fourth of July, they really remove everybody off the beach just because it's not a safe area for them to be. And, uh, so it would certainly be great to use the resources. Um, I think it would be difficult to ban Oregon legal fireworks as well. I think that would just add more work. How many, um, the process, if, say, I were in the Washington street after dark and I see some rock that's going to have more of us, um, does the officer have to visually see the launch and the bomb go off, or is it enough to have a report that it went off? You know, it would be great if you, cause you can do, uh, what's called a citizen's arrest and say, no, I saw that person in that blue shirt or with the flashlight, light the firework, and walk away and he's up there hiding in the dune now. You know, that's great, we can enforce that. But I know even in the last few weeks, uh, my officers have been issuing citations for the stray fireworks that are still going off, and it's still that game, you know, will they run down and let it off? Or there'll be two or three fires together and they're all pointing at each other when they're trying to figure out who set it off. And so that's why spotters would be good, getting that notification to the officers, having somebody that, and that's how they did it in two thousand four, where they had the zones on the beach so that each area was pretty saturated with spotters.
It seems that, listening to that discussion and all the emails we've received, uh, the majority of the emails are saying no fireworks legal or illegal. Doesn't mean everybody in town feels that way, but that's, those are the letters, yeah. But I would think that, uh, doing the first step, no fireworks of any kind whatsoever on the beach, period. Legal, illegal?
Yeah.
No fireworks on the beach. That'll help the officers that control the beach. You see anybody that...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just cost them five thousand dollars. Um, legal fireworks, I kind of understand that, it's tradition, people on kids really like it. So, uh, but it ought to be only, and I think we currently have notes on what time of year you can do it. So it should be just, I don't see what has to be days before, days after, may not just be before. Uh, legal fireworks only be, uh, that, used on the Fourth of July. And, and we'll, we'll talk about the floating lanterns, can't use those, period.
I would say, Adam-
If those are legal. Yeah. So, and if that doesn't work, we take the next drastic step and say, no fireworks, period. But we gotta communicate to have well in advance to the news media, not just our little local, why do you think, on the, I'll talk to those weathermen, tell everybody to come here, uh, but you just add one line, if you want a line fireworks. Um, but that would be a way, I, I think that have gone overboard. No fireworks on the beach, legal fireworks only on the Fourth of July. And those don't tend to run really.
Random.
Uh, but raise the fine, ten thousand dollars, it's not much if you take the cost of going out and putting out a fire. So, um, and communicate it very well. If we find a way to get volunteers, and I think we already had a number of people that will volunteer, but a way to give them instruction and perhaps walkie talkies, so that they can call it, maybe the iPhones or that. It won't satisfy everybody, certainly a step in the right direction, but it's gotta be signage, communication, and not the legal, we gotta start it early.
Mm-hmm.
People get all upset about it, so.
Yeah.
So it's all over, um, social media, watch what bad guys we are, make some newspapers and TV news to shut it out. That, that drives to good results.
Yeah, no, I think we can make a great, um, press release between, uh, the city staff and the fire department to get something out and get it out fast and often. And I know a young lady that can help us with some of that.
I think also, we can try and garnish some good press with a better celebration.
Yeah.
So if the parade happens, if we can do a parade again, um, figure out a way to make the parade fit into some other stuff that's going on so that it's not just parade fireworks, done, you know, let's have some stuff happen. That's a time, I, I agree with that.
You know, what about the, the, conscious, bizarre-
Yeah, be careful of, I know after the parade though, the traffic is just impossible on the Fourth, so having other celebrations somewhere else during the day, um, might be next to impossible. At night, maybe in the evening and then into dark and beyond, then I think something like that would be great.
Actually, you know, this, I'll just, oh, I'm here, but the Starlight Parade in Brooklyn is a heck of a lot of fun and to do something after dark-
Mm-hmm.
-that includes flashlights and glowy things and, you know, even those are toxic and stuff, it's, it's much safer than fireworks and we've got a really safe little loop downtown, so maybe that would be a fun difference. You really look on the coast, nobody does that. So, that's an idea.
Leaving a parade each year, I think all but two citizens go to the fire department for a barbecue and we could give out the information there and keep talking about it. There's plenty of opportunities to get the word out.
And all of the legal fireworks don't make noise, correct?
They make a snapping and popping and some whistle, um, but it's definitely not the same amount as the other ones, um, do. It's, uh, regarding the before and after that happen, uh, especially next year will be a good test for that being on a Saturday. We're gonna have the lead up beforehand and so we'll just schedule accordingly and have the volunteers come out a few nights before as well.
What do you guys do with the confiscated?
We actually just destroy them. We used to, the fire, state fire marshal used to come through and pick them all up and I don't know what he did with them.
(laughing)
But we destroy them now, put them in a big garbage can and fill it with water and then destroy them.
Well, I can tell you what happened.
(laughing)
Because my daughter had some fireworks that we took to the fire department and she found out later they enjoyed them.
(laughing)
That was a long time ago, but it was a little bad because I was trying to give her an example of what not, and then it went the other way.
I guess, if we had some of the legal ones and we did a video of them-
Yeah.
We could put that on the website, show these are appropriate.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, you know.
And the shape-
Sure, my kids would love to volunteer for that video.
On their website.
Can I say something?
Sure.
So, are we gonna bring dogs down here? We have to have the-
Deb, come up to the thanks for the microphone for hearing.
My name's David Tia and I live at three eight four Sunset, Hobart. So, my question is about the dogs, if we're gonna bring dogs and invite dogs down here, the, the legal ones can be an issue as well. So, if we're gonna make the fireworks free zone, then we just have to consider, okay, everybody with dogs come to Cannon Beach, but then the legal ones, can they be contained in the park, um, or some containment of them somewhere?
It'd have to be the other way around.
Contain the dogs?
Yeah. Well, I mean, if you were doing an event for the dogs-
Right.
-do it somewhere where the fireworks are not allowed.
Right, so that's what we have to consider and also, um, we know the legal ones are gonna be allowed, I think that's me, me finding, because they were going out all over the place and some of them were far beyond twenty feet, so is that illegal?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so that was downtown, so.
Yeah, and then, you know, we'll have to, what I was thinking is if we create fireworks free zones, city parks, fireworks free zones, and include some sort of boundary beyond that so that you don't have the overlays. Yeah, naturally the beach is already that way.
Natural.
Naturally, that's what we're thinking.
I do like the idea of creating a, a digital, Starlight Parade, having dog events, I think that's a real attraction. We already have a number of them during the year and that would then say, no fireworks of any kind. Oh, I, my, my dog is always just sat there and watched him, no problem, not all dogs like that.
Yeah.
Certainly, when the state parks gonna restrict, gotta say no legal fireworks on the beach.
No fireworks at all are allowed on the beach.
Yeah, not at all. We ought to be able to say, uh, no fireworks at all in the, uh, city parks or in downtown. You know, some, and what they put, uh, areas we can restrict it and then have unique events that are fireworks free.
Yeah. No, you can certainly zone off areas like that, whether it's, uh, um, you know, Second Street on or around the Chamber and, uh, City Park where we just have, uh, signs up but also volunteers standing there to, you know, tell people no fireworks in here. Um, but that's all up to you guys.
Um, a lot of them are going off, up on Elk Creek, that's a concern because of fire danger in the woods there, I think that's very scary. Um, also, the other thing that we need to talk about is all the litter that's created that weekend and how to prevent that, because that was just overwhelming out here. So, um, there's a lot of wildlife up in the woods too, so I don't know how that's covered.
That's county.
The wildlife in the woods?
No, the, the woods, fire dangers, yeah, in the wildlife.
Well, they're, they're in town, they're areas where I live, so.
Yeah, exactly, the northern too, yeah.
You know, ours always been done up in the middle of the street.
Especially if we have a hot spell, like we're having, you know, like, it's getting really dry, it's, it's a real danger. Who's the fire chief? Well, hi.
(laughing) God, me.
Uh-oh.
Um, Deb, when you said Elk Creek, you meant Elk, Elk Creek Road?
Yes, up, because we live up Sunset and we heard them all around, top above us. So, I don't know.
Was there any?
It's up in the county that's back there.
Is that in the reserve or back up into the, uh?
It's up behind Cleve Rupers, which is county jurisdiction.
Oh, that's the area.
Yeah.
Up in mountainous.
Yeah, there's a lot of, there's dry woods up there right now, it's freezing, they just, uh.
Ken, let me ask Mark, uh, in the fire districts, if we were to start having no fireworks zones, can a fire district do that also?
We cannot enforce, we don't have the ability to enforce. So I said to all my out with police, um, helping them, but I don't have the ability to enforce, all I can do is be proactive and help with that thing. Uh, yeah, the fire district has the ability to enforce, it has to come from law enforcement.
Well, ultimately, like you said, we can pass whatever rules we want, but if we can't enforce them, then we have an complication. So, it's gonna be simple enough, enforce, that's one reason, the last time we talked, no fireworks at all, then any fireworks you see are very illegal.
That's what I-
I thought that would be easier to enforce.
Yeah.
But, uh, Jason, it's, it's mad hard.
Well, because you, anywhere you go in the state of Oregon, people can buy fireworks, they're legal and they do in their hometowns and then they come down here, oh, they're illegal down here. But, I mean, that could be something that we did, it would just take a lot of, uh, time to enforce, just like if the, the illegal ones.
If we buy a sign like we buy the hat and we, as people are entering the city and it says no fireworks, it should be very quick, it's only a couple ways in, in town.
Well, you just say ten thousand dollar fine.
Yeah.
And that'll, that's great for publicity because, I mean, a town enforces, uh, no fireworks with ten thousand dollar fine. And is that per firework or is that, you know, so, I mean, that, there's your publicity right there, there's your, you know, there's your headline.
You're still gonna have that, uh, that person that's gonna read that and say, oh, that's now illegal fireworks. They're gonna think fireworks are fine. Nobody, like, sparklers are illegal, so they'll still do it. So there will be enforcement and I, I, I think this is going to be a training program, this is gonna be years down the road before we can get to a point where we're saying we're really comfortable, um, because people are just gonna have to learn. But if we set up a, either, uh, no fireworks at all or some, just the legal, um, in zones that we allow it and stuff, um, it's a message that we have to get out and have to stick to. So, whichever way we will. If it gets to a point where nobody's using legal fireworks and they're comfortable with that, we may take the next step. Or if they're really abusing the legal firework issue, take the next step. I agree with Mike on that.
So I'm always so interested in timing because I'm gonna devote myself to this the next year, so you guys have a free gig, okay? And a lot of the, you put a lot of energy into it, because I will make it work and I will work with you to make it work. So, and I already have a group of volunteers and my husband was talking with, what's his mom? He was, talking with Cannon Beach, he's a volunteer to do it too and so, we'll get, start getting the volunteers and I would love to start, I've already set up Protect Cannon Beach, um, Facebook and, um, it's starting to grow and I'm ready for social media, whatever needs to happen, so they can start getting the word out to, to start the affirmation type of mentality so they know. And, um, so I would love to, you know, get started on that with, uh, with the plans that you guys set up. And you, you both got my, all my stuff, right?
Yep.
I think that's everything I could possibly think of.
Yep, no, and that's great, Deb, um, I just don't, don't get ahead of us.
Don't get ahead, okay.
Yeah, because we need to formulate some ordinances or whatever we require so that we can have the law in place and we can design the media aspect of it, really get that out with the word behind it.
Mr. Mayor, um, we're talking about Fourth of July. Do we want to have something in place for New Year's Eve?
That would be nice.
Oh, yeah.
And that's the other issue.
So is that, is that our timeframe for, you know, fines or whatever it is to at least get the, the bigger pieces in place?
That's a good one.
Okay.
I just, there are any consensus here in council about banning all fireworks?
I'd like to see no fireworks.
I'd like to see no fireworks, but I worry that Jason's job is gonna be that much harder to do, that's, that's-
We can make anything work. I mean, we really can, I just can't promise that, uh, it's not gonna be more of a burden, but, you know, it's completely up to you guys and we'll do whatever you ask of us. Uh, it just, I mean, it would make sense that would spread us then, uh, because we'd be responding to a lot of different calls, whether they're legal or illegal. Um, so, and I mean, in all reality, we would probably be responding to legal fireworks as well because people wouldn't know or they'd hear whistling or they'd see something and say, oh, that's illegal. And so-
That's the, uh, the notification sent for, uh, no fireworks, period, if any kind legal or illegal, rather than trying to send out pictures of these are legal, those aren't, you know, or what the state does, it rises, what, five feet or something, they're illegal. I mean, just a total ban rarely sends a message out. It also gives us the opportunity to involve other fun activities upon our, uh, and obviously dog type of, the ideas, uh, maybe the, uh, children's pet parade is part of it, um, another night parade, but certainly more than just one concert on the day, an afternoon or evening concert. Without the, I remember, I think one of the fire dancers there, somebody was launching these big bombs.
Oh, yeah.
While they're trying to enjoy turning the park. Now, that was the illegal ones, clearly, but it's a crap of a pop. I do have an example for that, it's such a tradition, but if one is like this, a lot of like friends and birds, this part of our island, you know, we lose all the sea birds out here, those that, well, from the sea, it's often, it's always your gutters. Then, that costs us a lot to live, the ten thousand dollar fine, you know, that, that can, a real loss to the community if we drive away or, or, so, I guess I'm answering Michael, so I, I was in favor of sort of banning, but I just couldn't put a loan on that. And I can understand the compromise, the reason it is, but, well, there's nothing like to press publicity and the recognition we get, it's just, uh, what we have other fun things to do.
And others, others, you know, sort of Astoria inside, um, my friend who's in the trail band, he does a shadow puppet show and he knows life and they're like super fun and the kids just love them, they have one in Manzanita, it was like super popular and he, he's comical and fun and magical and something like that, family department would be great. Kids just love it and it should be a family type of thing, you know, to distract them from the fireworks. And that certainly will, because he uses music and they have art, shadow puppets and it's quiet, it's nothing, it's slow, so, that's awesome. I've already talked to him, I'm getting ahead of myself.
Generate some other ideas for that sort of- Generate some other ideas for that sort of, more of a, of a, a quiet kind of a celebration. I think we, we have a number of those to think about.
Grant?
Uh, yes, and I, I am in favor of, of banning all the fireworks, because I believe if you allow the legal fireworks, it's not going to get us where we want to be. And that is, as Mike pointed out, danger to the birds, the litter especially, is something that I just can't.
Oh, it's horrible.
Put up with. So, you know, I'd, I'd accept a ban on legal versus illegal, but, uh, my opinion is, is that we should ban law.
Well, I, I voice my opinion, but I'll, I'll work with the, however the council wishes. I'm, I would be disappointed to, with the small stuff. But if that's the way the city really wants to go, it's gonna be rough, uh, that first year. I don't think we can get a full-on event going, you know, by that time, that's, that's a heck of a push. But if there's people out there willing to try, you know. Sounds like it's a full ban.
Full ban, and what are your opinions? Opinions on the fine, five thousand, ten thousand?
I would stick with five, just because of the legal parameter there.
Okay.
For now, uh, that's, that's something if we have to, maybe we could start dropping that up.
To reach your current.
And maybe, uh, maybe there's a way to differentiate the small stuff with the big stuff, I don't know, it'll be hard, but, you know, if you got a kid running down on the beach with a sparkler, you say, "Ten thousand dollars, kid." Um, that's it, you know.
Knowing kids these days, you'd probably pull it out of his pocket.
But it's one of the two, and.
Yeah.
But you also have the, uh, guy at the north end, who just happens to be a Seattle lawyer, who's launching bombs like crazy.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's, that's a different challenge.
Mm-hmm.
Bruce?
So, we, um, do we need to workshop this again, or do we bring to an ordinance that says, uh, ban all fireworks, and a five thousand dollar fine, or up to five thousand, wherever your number is? Because potentially, we can bring that to September, if not, we can bring it to October, and that'll be in place for, um, New Year's.
If we do a full ban, we don't have to do all the tweaking stuff, for zones and timing and stuff, so.
We'll go for it.
What's your perspective, Ken?
And, and include the definitions.
Sure.
And include, um, the lanterns in that?
Yeah, definitely.
What are those called?
They're, um.
Floating, uh, fireworks.
Floating lanterns, yeah, and they're the ones that.
I've seen them, I've.
Yeah, they're called a floating lantern, and Fire Chief's gone, but they, uh, are very notorious for starting fires, and obviously, with the way that the wind blows, they all just launch right into the woods, and so you're protecting our.
Could we say floating lanterns only on east winds?
Yeah.
It's really cold when they go out over the ocean.
Yeah, yeah.
You might check, too, to see if we don't already have a ban on those in the ordinances, because I remember my, uh, Matt Gardner, when he was in the fire department, he had a whole campaign against those things, and I, I remember doing a story on, you know, all of the lanterns and everything that he, he grabbed, he found.
I think that the fine on those is three hundred dollars, though, so it'd be good to include them all together and make it worth.
Yeah, but we might have something in the ordinance.
Oh, just have to look and see if there's an ordinance, but I don't know.
Even, even if there is, adding it to this is. Okay?
We'll check that. And, um, assuming we can get it rednapped, it'll be first September.
Okay, then.
So, if you, if you wanna just give me parameters, and I'll, I'm here to start working on it at any more point, and I'll just wait for your lead on that, um, Jason or whoever, um, even if little steps concerning the bigger stuff, you know, whatever, that woman said, sorry.
Start, start finding some folks who are willing to put on a celebration.
Start finding some what?
Folks that are willing to help.
Oh, I already have, I've heard, probably fifty.
There you go.
Yeah, probably, yeah, no, no problem, I'm, I'm an activator, okay.
Why is that scary?
Yeah, so we, Jason and I already talked about this, we're gonna have a team, they're gonna have like seven police, and we'll have the fire department, and we're gonna have teams under them, right, I mean, I'm gonna have a hand, no. We got, you know, this is gonna be fun, okay? We got a fun one, and this is gonna be a challenge, and it's gonna be more physical than music is gonna be.
All right, okay, moving to the, moving on to the next topic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deb.
Diversity discussion, Bruce?
Yes, sir, um, we had put out a couple of things in the hearing materials that relate to having, uh, discussions at the employee level, and then also at the community level. And so I'd like Jason to talk about the employee level, and, um, Kelly was on, um, because she was already researching the C I S. And she has a number of sources, the chief of, to have, um, like Zoom presentations that, uh, the community participate in. Also, um, but hasn't seen, uh, the topic yet, um, I think that Manzanita did a really nice job on the resolution that they did, and so if we want to do a resolution, I would, you know, probably model it closely to what, um, they've already put out. So, um, Jason, if you would kinda talk about what you, where you are with C I S, and, uh, Kelly, if you would be on standby?
Also, I request Nadia to speak as well.
I got her on my list.
Okay.
Okay. So, uh, as Bruce said, Kelly's been a great addition, uh, to our staff, and she's provided me with, um, lots of different articles and, uh, things that we've, at the police department, put into a notebook, and each week, they're presented with a new article, just informing them, uh, ahead of time, keep an open mind to different opinions, and, uh, it's actually created some good discussion amongst the officers on different takes of things, and they're also providing, um, different articles that they find in different things. But the Oregon Association Chiefs of Police also sends out, um, I guess it's every week or so, including the International Association Chiefs of Police, that send out articles or things that come up. And obviously, it's a topic that has always been there, um, trying to create new ideas, and/or, um, hiring practices, um, ways to recruit, um, and so, these are all things that we're looking at and working on as well. But I did, I think after the last council meeting that we had, and we talked about it, um, I received a call from a speaker, uh, who is in California, and she said, "Hey, I'd like to send you a Zoom webinar, um, because this is what I do," and so she's gonna work with sending me that, and it's something that me and Lieutenant Wilbur can review, and then review with the department, and she said she'd be willing to work with us to create either a training schedule or something that we can, um, keep these videos for the officers to watch, and/or have a answer, question and answer session with her as well. But trying to get local, um, representatives as well to partake in it, and either come in, talk with us at the department, but continue the reach, the outreach that we're doing, uh, with the Hispanic community, which is so important. And I was supposed to participate in a Zoom, um, video for Census Day, uh, with the Hispanic council, and it didn't work out, because it happened to be the same night that Seaside was having the protests this last weekend, but, um, it's certainly something I wanna be involved in, and working with them to continue that relationship. But, uh, still in the same boat with C I S, the county's, uh, city-county insurance company, working with, uh, their webinar, um, because that's the only way they'll do training now, is something that can be in a Zoom-type environment, um, for staff and the police department staff as well.
Thanks, Jason.
Thanks.
Um, can you unmute Kelly?
Hi, uh, can you hear me all right?
Hi, Kelly. We hear you.
Hi, other, perfect, um, so kind of the update of what we were talking about, we wanted to do, uh, for the community was just a, a sort of open Zoom meeting that would be available for, uh, any community members in Cannon Beach, um, to be hosted, kind of as an lectureship series, uh, with the purpose of, uh, getting experts to come in and put on some, a, a series of topics related to diversity, equity, and inclusion, as means to educate our community members, uh, let them know how to get involved, um, with the E I, and as well as, um, kind of start a communication with, uh, businesses, and mostly focusing, uh, kinda primarily on the idea of awareness and understanding what the problems, issues, and different experiences of underrepresented groups are. Um, it's pretty, it's a pretty early work in progress, um, but there's a few groups, most of which are based out of Portland rather than the North Coast, but they're, uh, pretty familiar with the demographics that we have, uh, who have a lot of experience working with, um, putting on different lectureship series or with engagement, um, programs that, uh, are getting us in touch with a few different, um, people who would be able to participate in this. Um, so not too sure really kind of the full sort of structure of what it is. I think it'd be type, kind of a little mini lectureship series that could be, um, recorded and then available for anyone, and then, uh, we could also put out, uh, sort of advanced information about what the topics are, and any kind of, um, like question and formats for people to submit before that they would want discussed after the lecture's over.
Okay, thanks, Kelly. Any questions for either Jason or Kelly?
Um, it would be, I wouldn't mind seeing some of the articles that the police are reading, just so when people ask me what I'm doing, I might be able to reference some.
Yeah, no, I could certainly forward them to the council, uh, the ones that we've been receiving, um, I'll just email them to you guys.
Very cool.
And this room meeting would be really much.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
Participate in it.
Um, have there been any, um, this, has there been any discussion on, uh, hiring practices, maybe developing new contacts elsewhere beyond what you have already developed, uh, for either the city staff or the police department?
Yeah, one thing that, uh, I've been keeping an eye on, and it's, uh, difficult with the makeup of our department right now, but reaching out to the, um, Hispanic council and, uh, other entities to see if they could help us put together a video, it's something that a lot of police departments are doing, where they speak with the community, and they show the involvement the police department has, um, and the diversity that the police department has, but also their connections, uh, with diverse populations in their community. So, that's certainly something that we'd like to do, put together, um, can't think of what the name of it is now, but a lot of the bigger agencies are using it as a recruitment video, um, that can be posted, people can say, "Hey, you know, this department looks like a good department to go work for, these are the different things that they do, and who they work with, so."
And where would, where would you distribute this?
What's that?
Where would you distribute the video?
Oh, it would be, um, something that we send out or email to people, or we could have recruitment firms help us get that out, um, to people, even the employment division, um, where people can view these things, they could click on the City of Cannon Beach website and see the video, um, on our police department website. They're actually very in length, and you'll see them on Facebook, that type of thing as well.
And for the recorder position, we also reached out to the Lord Columbia, um.
Hispanic Council.
Hispanic Council. Council, and, um, they said they would forward, uh, up to their contact.
Um, but Jason just said, reminded me of something, a couple of years ago, at one of the mayor's conferences, they have a program where they give awards to students for, uh, presentations. And one of the students, a young lady in a high school, did a superb video on, um, wasn't specific to what we're talking about, diversity or anything like that, but she was doing it, uh, in the Latin community, Hispanic community, that she had in her community, which I think is somewhere down the valley. But I was wondering if reaching out to the high school kids for their, uh, Pacifica project, one of them might be willing to take on the love video stuff, um, to put together some sort of, they're into this.
Oh, yeah.
Something that we could put on our website as a, um, local kid training.
Yeah.
I don't know, I, I would love to reach out somehow to the kids that I know that are in school yet.
Sure.
When they do, and I know you've got connections.
Yeah, yeah. I know a boy.
Yeah, and, um, Nadia and I have been playing phone tag, but I, I know that she's made a good contact also.
I'm, yeah, please.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Um.
Hi.
Yeah, thanks for letting me, um, chime in here, I really appreciate all the work that you've done, um, in the last month, and your continued interest in diversity, equity, inclusion, and Black Lives Matter. Um, and I really love the idea of a speaker series that, um, involves the larger community in, in discussion about these really important topics. Um, I continue to think that, um, you can't recruit new people into your organization until your organization is ready, um, and in order to get ready, um, a, a, a more comprehensive process would, um, help you delve into your individual, uh, characteristics, um, individually, um, staff people, volunteers, and, and the actual organization. Um, I've gone through this process with my previous employer, the Columbia Land Trust, um, took a couple of years, and, um, it was really eye-opening, I know, uh, other local organizations like North Coast Land Conservancy are going through this now, um, and if you jump straight into recruitment, you, um, what you'll, what often happens is that you, um, uh, end up losing those new recruits quite quickly if your organization is not inclusive yet. And so, um, I encourage you to think more deeply about whether the city of Cannon Beach is, um, ready to embrace a process that would really look at you and, um, have like an ongoing, um, uh, working with a consultant, to have an ongoing process, um, to make that happen. And so, um, and I know that's not, that wasn't on your work plan this year, this wasn't on my work plan either, and, um, that's the problem, and, um, but, uh, and I know it's also not in your budget necessarily, so I was like, "How can I make this easier for you?" And so I reached out to the Meyer Memorial Trust, which is a very generous Oregon foundation that really is focusing on diversity now, even before the Black Lives movement really came to Oregon in the way that it is now. They've been, um, funding especially nonprofit organizations over the state to do this important work. And normally, it's nonprofits, but I was able to talk to a woman, Carol Cheney, yesterday, um, who grew up in rural Oregon, um, one of the only Asian people in her eastern Oregon town, and, um, now does diversity work, is the head diversity person at Meyer Memorial Trust, and she was really interested in potentially funding, um, a North Coast city to do this kinds of work, and to, to, um, so that you might be a leader in our North Coast community, so that we can do this work, not just here in our city, but in our county, and the county to the south also, because we all need it, and, um, and so, um, you know, so I just had that initial conversation. Funding is available up to thirty-five thousand dollars to do this, um, over a couple of years, so, um, anyway, I, I, I look forward to talking to Bruce more about it, but the, the most important thing is, is you have to make it a priority for your city, you have to, you know, um, I think we as citizens have been coming to encourage you to be open to it, but if the city and the staff are, are not ready, like, we don't, it's not, it's not the kind of thing that you have, can force on someone, you have to really, um, um, you know, move forward as a unit, and, um, because it, you know, it's a hard process, really coming to terms with this stuff, and so, um, I hope that you'll, um, think carefully about it, and, um, and I, and I continue to be a resource. And so I hope that you'll think carefully about it and, and I continue to be a resource as well as Lynette I see in the room here and, and Charles and others. So thanks so much.
Thanks Nadia. It does sound like an opportunity there.
If we can get the information and Kelly will work on it.
Yeah, I know they're really, really into education.
Yeah.
So that's a, that's a huge inner out there. Anybody else got anything to add?
No, it's an ongoing process, years.
Does sound a little bit like a catch 22. Incorporated, you know how to incorporate it.
Yeah.
But I think there is a loop in there somewhere that we can jump on, so great. Okay, moving on. Next topic, Toll of All Lees. This is gonna be tough.
Yeah, actually Andrew is here if you have any questions, but he contacted us and said that they are, would like to extend the lease including the existing terms. We'll say that as a result of the conversation we had with Cannon Beach Academy and trying to coordinate the, you know, if you're gonna go over here, whatever. And so what you can look forward to is essentially the same lease conditions, except that it will be, it will tie together with whatever we end up with, with Cannon Beach Academy. So that's kind of where we'll end up. That's acceptable and we should be able to have that for September 1st.
I noticed on the, on number four, the use of premises, it says no other uses shall be allowed. In the event other uses are allowed, this lease shall terminate immediately. So I guess I have two questions. First of all, if we come to an agreement, be used by the academy, will that language go away in the, in the lease?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that they're not, and it's a concern that we really don't have any control on it and it has been happening. And so that's why we want to put something in both of the leases.
Okay.
And that was your catch.
And then the other question I had is, does that mean that it's only, only, well, I guess in a way this, that will take care of this question, but does that mean only the, the arts colony can use Toll of All Hall and the city can't use it? If, if it's to use for anything else, then the terminates, the lease terminates immediately? I mean, that doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, I don't think that if we were one of the ones to use it, that it would cause termination, but it's for the programming of the Toll of All Arts Colony.
Okay, so no, no other nonprofit group can go in there and use it for a, an event of some kind?
My, my, my feeling on that, I shouldn't say my opinion, would be that somebody else can use it as long as Toll of All Arts gave them the permission to use it because it would be their organization that oversees the use of the property.
Yeah.
Now, I wouldn't want to willy nilly Andrew saying, let's have a service of it, but trusting, you know, them to.
Well, the way the, the language right now says only for a public purpose, which is the operation of Toll of All Arts, a public facility. So that's the question, can the city use it?
Yeah.
Was this language the city can use?
Sure.
A public purpose, probably requires Toll of All to make some analysis. I want to take a look at that paragraph.
Yeah, I don't believe it because it says such.
Is okay, Andrew, can I?
Hi, Andrew Townery, P O Box 664, Toll of All Arts. So in February, we hired a lawyer to look over all of our, you know, just take a 10,000 feet look at the organization, make sure we were all in, you know, accordance with nonprofit laws and with the lease. And the lease, that review, that, the, the passage in four of the lease agreement came up. And one of the questions we had was, could we, you know, so we of course encourage all nonprofit groups, you know, community groups, use the hall, no cost, but could we do something like rent it out for a wedding reception that, you know, that have the funds benefit the arts colony? And that seems unclear in the contract, so that's something that I want to.
What do you think so?
Or we would like some clarity on that.
It seems like a private wedding is not a public.
Use.
To me would be.
Well, and it does it wants like, you know, something like, I guess like a homeowner association wants to have a meeting there or like, is that public, is that private?
Private.
It's still private. I can't just walk into it or anticipate.
But if, but it say H R A P wanted to do a lecture series at the Toll of All Hall, I think that would be public use, you could do that.
Yeah, yeah, we generally, it's been a thing, if anyone can show up at the public. But then again, you know, if a nonprofit wanted to have a board meeting there, and it wasn't necessarily open to public.
It should be open to the public, but by law.
So as long as it's legally open to the public, that makes sense. I think also a residential kind of use, if there was a Toll of All Community Meeting at the toll of all, that's a public use because it would be residents invited to come.
Or say a coaster theater rehearsal, it's a closed, you know, the public can't show up, but it is a public, a community benefit, right? I mean.
Yeah, there's a lot of weird little if's.
Well, the, the, the language is, it says, public purpose, which is the operation of the Toll of All Arts Colony, a public community facility, let's see, is solely responsible for the operation of the building for such public use. And I think the such public use, it's not just a public use, it's such public use. So is the such, does the such refer to the Toll of All Arts Colony or does it refer to the public community facility? That's my question is, just what, what does it refer to?
It refers to me, it refers to the use, such use.
Such public use, but it's.
As, you know.
As the top, as the operation of the colony or the community public facility?
I mean, we've been operating as, as just in a public good, you know, use of, but we, I don't, I'm not quite fluent enough in the legal use, but it might be, we would like some clarification or just to, you know, but otherwise we're, you know, we're happy. Another question I had.
If I can maybe step in on that, I think it kind of dealt with something similar to this and I think that it's good that community groups can, you know, can use it, rent it, whatever. And the interpretation I've seen in the past is that those kind of uses are allowed as long as anybody that comes in gets to use it equally. So you can't say, well, you know, we won't let you in, but somebody else can come in. That kind of misses with the idea that everybody has access to it. But I would hope that we don't get to the point that we lose, you know, a meeting hall for a lot of the things or, you know, coasters, you know, rehearsal or something like that because it all is part, it's a community use, which probably is a better word than, you know, public use. So that would just be interpretation.
Yeah, community use would be a better use.
And then you mentioned tying it together with the academy, does that mean in terms of lease time as well?
Uh, no.
Are we looking at another, another five year renewal? Is that what we're looking for here? Is that what, that's what this was?
Uh, I don't, honestly, didn't look at what the renewal time was. I think you'd be asking for a five, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And we'll ask for 99 if you want.
Right, yeah. But I think, I think we'll do good with five depending. But as far as the coordination, it's going with the CBA. It's still your ability, your ability to accommodate them, but also by changing the two leases, we want to be a part of that. So if all of a sudden they're gonna start cooking, you know, all these other kind of things, we have responsibility in there. And so we really don't want to get into micromanaging, but if it's something that would influence or potentially cause damage to the city's position.
We've thought your, you know.
Yeah, that's, that's really, but right now it's, we don't get involved with it and, you know, we're dealing with kids and some other things, so we want to know what's going on.
And then going forward, back to this, you know, I have a board, so a private rental going forward is something we need to curtail?
It's how, it's how we want to interpret community use.
I mean, you know, it's supporting the community in that, you know, we rented it out for, you know, a Thanksgiving dinner there for a family that needs a big place and benefits the arts colony. I mean, like, I would just love to know where that, where we have to go.
Yeah, and I think, and Robin brings up a good point. I think that it's not necessarily public, I think if we use interpretation, public, it's yes, I can go in, but if it's community, then, you know, it's limited from the community, but it's limited to that group. Not everybody can go.
I mean, I could, I could make a suggestion that if that were allowed, you could always give priority first to a public event that would always, you know, outrank something of our own. Because we don't, I mean, we don't get many requests for private rentals anyway, so it's just a little too small or, you know, a little too something, but it's, you know.
You could keep it clear though, and it just as far as everyone basically, that's easier than.
I guess.
Work each, um, event and try and scrutinize it.
I would, I would feel a little cautious about saying a private rental. I guess my first plan would be for city residents only. That would be one limitation, but even those could be kind of seen as not public. I don't know. You know, if it's, if it's for Uncle Joe's retirement party, you know, people are gonna be hyped if they know Uncle Joe, so that's kind of public, but it's still a private party.
You know, like we, we did, when I, you know, this is years ago now, we did a, a couple of families did graduation for their kids, you know, a graduation party, they wanted to host it at their home, you know.
That makes sense to me because kids can show up and, you know.
But, but again, it wasn't, you know, it was essentially private, you know, and it's for people that didn't want it, it wasn't.
So I, that's, that's a careful thing to, to balance, but I think, you know, I just don't want it to become the popular place for private parties where the door's locked and, you know, and only these people get to show up, so.
Well, and we ran into a situation with the chambers board when we were renting out the hall and the hotels were not happy with us doing that because we had a little competition. And I was thinking some ways restaurants might feel the same way, so we don't want to step on people's toes.
I can just tell you the demand for this is very low and I'm only bringing it up because it was just something maybe we clarified in the next three.
Well, now you're totally unclarified, aren't you?
Yeah, I guess homework here is done.
Yeah.
The demand is very low and it's just restricted. Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, thanks Andrew. And when we get the, the academy wording, can we see both contracts together?
I have one question, and sorry Andrew, you left, is the part about the property taxes, is that a sticking point for you guys or is that something that doesn't matter as well?
Uh, I'm unaware of any.
I don't think we're taxed, it's our, we own it.
And is it true the city doesn't pay property tax on it?
I believe so.
Okay. All right, it's just a non-issue.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Question continues in there.
Yeah, that was just a scare.
Yeah.
It worked.
Okay, next item, last item, Recology, we have a proposal.
Introduction for you guys, Dave Larmouth.
Hey. Go ahead.
Can you see me? Can you hear me?
We can, we can hear you and see you.
Okay, I've got, just like you, I have multiple monitors doing different things. So if I'm not looking here, it's because all, everything I need to know is up over here. Anyway, for the record, my name is Dave Larmouth, I work for Recology Western Oregon. My home address is 1350 Northwest Countryside Court in beautiful McMinnville, Oregon. It's no Cannon Beach, but you know, we do what we can.
It's not your wife, it's Sarah, just coming to use your bath.
Usually, usually at this point, the dog jumps up in his lap.
Yeah, so, sorry. So Mayor, Councilors, thank you for having me tonight. This is an unusual time for us, obviously for you as well. We, I want to tell you that we take this, this role we have as, as an essential service seriously. Our routes are running as scheduled. Most of our customer service and office staff, obviously including me, are, are working from home. Our drivers have what they need to protect themselves and, you know, honestly, they're, they're, they're real heroes in our story. I don't know how they do it every day, but they're showing it up and doing it. When all this started, we reached out to staff and let you know you could count on us and we've continued that commitment to residents if they're dealing with COVID-related challenges, we'll work with, do everything possible to continue their service. No one wants trash piling up during a, a public health crisis. Obviously there's, have been serious impacts on the residents and businesses we serve. We hope all of this is, is temporary. The financial data that, that we shared with you is our, is for our projected year. Obviously, we didn't know in March what things would look like now in August or what they'll look like next spring, so that there are always a guess. Our, our hope is still that things will, will come back. During the peak of the stay at home orders, our commercial lifts for the front load containers, the big ones that has the truck that, the big arms that comes out, dumps over the top, it's awesome to watch. Those, each time we do that for a customer, that's, that's considered a lift. And so those, that count was down about 21% for the area. And the big boxes that we, that we haul for, for some of our larger customers in Cannon Beach area, it's some of the, three of the larger hotels have the, the big compacters that we service that way. And then also any construction jobs, those big temporary boxes. So that work was all, was down temporarily, but we've seen that start to come back. Overall, the garbage tons year to date are up about 2%. So March and April and May were all lower than what we normally see, but we think a lot of that work has just sort of been delayed, pushed later in the year. I did want to clear up an issue we, we've heard several times from customers recently. Unfortunately, we live in a, in a sort of a regional and sometimes national media circle and unfortunately, news stories come out that cause confusion for our customers. I want to assure you that the recycling that we're, that we collect is continuing to be recycled. The, the sorting facilities we use in Portland have had to make a lot of temporary changes to how they do business, but they have been able to, to stay open and your recycling is getting delivered. Volume for recycling and yard debris has been up as, you know, you can probably imagine more folks are spending time at home and they're shopping online and they're taking delivery of takeout food and they're working on landscaping projects. It's been, it's been pretty nuts on the yard debris pile. I did also want to tell you that the. I did also want to tell you that the Hazardous Waste Facility in Astoria is open. In fact, their, their most recent, uh, event was last Saturday, uh, the 10th. But, but they've only scheduled one more event for the rest of this calendar year. And that event is October 10th from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Of course, all of that is, is subject to change. So you, you want to check the, the county, uh, Health Department website for those details. Um, on the, uh, on the collection rates, we are, uh, requesting a 2.9% adjustment. And that applies to most of the rates. There are some rates that don't change, uh, from year to year. And then there are some rates that change, uh, a bit differently based on, um, in this case, the change in the disposal site. And that, sorry, change in, in the rate that we pay at, uh, the disposal sites. And sorry, I, um, I, I lost one of my pages here. Um, so the, uh, those rates are changing by, uh, a different percentage. Or we're proposing to change them by a different percentage. It's a, it's 4.16% for, uh, the, for demolition waste. And, uh, actually, it is, uh, 2.9% for regular trash that goes to, uh, the Astoria Transfer Station. The demolition waste is material we take to Trails End Recovery and Warrant and they sort out what's recoverable out of that, out of that dry waste. So it's 2.9% adjustment for most rates. And, uh, when we made the proposal back in March, uh, we requested that the effective date be deferred, uh, until September 1st in the hopes, uh, that we could minimize the impacts to our community during the stay-at-home orders. We know things aren't back to normal-normal, but they're normaler than they were back in, uh, in March and April. Uh, the impact, uh, the most popular, uh, service version of just, as, as you may know, we have different cart sizes. We have different frequencies and we also have locations, curb side and sad yard. So, uh, you, there are lots of different options on the menu for folks to choose from. The most popular is the, is the small cart, 32-gallon cart with weekly service, uh, picked up at the curb. And it, and the, uh, 2.9% increase to those customers would be 79 cents a month. So the new rate for that service would be 27.86. I have the rate sheets in front of me. If anybody wants to ask about their, their particular favorite service, uh, we can, we can look those up and, and talk about them. But in general, uh, I just want to say, you, we're our, we're your provider in, in good times and in bad times. And we look forward to, uh, celebrating with you once, uh, we can all be in, in public together again. Uh, not, not today, not this week. Uh, that's all I have prepared, but I'm happy to take your questions, whatever you want to know. I'm, I'll do my best.
Thank you, Dave.
Very pleased.
Nobody has a favor picked up?
It's the weekly residential.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
I guess that's the end of that topic, if there's no questions. Yeah, he, he always puts out a great report.
So these will be forwarded in, um, effective September 1st.
Okay.
We appreciate the fact that they deferred these costs to our residents for several months.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was very appreciated. At that, we will end the meeting. Um, information, all of the order. Uh, the only thing I can think of is we have an executive meeting tomorrow night.
5:30, correct?
Yeah.
Right here.
And we have a coffee with the councilors next Monday night, Monday morning, Monday morning, 10 o'clock here in the cha-chambers. Coffee with the councilors. Come one, come all. Well, you guys, but.
And I want to thank Rusty for setting up the camera.
Yeah, I just noticed that.
It was a little bigger, I could figure out a little.
We're gonna get a better solution, but that was a temporary.
Yeah.
That's a good idea. Yeah.
Thank Rick.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you, Rick.
He's been smiling this whole meeting.
I just passed.
He's a model.
Pass it over to Rusty, how can Rick keep up that smile for so long?
I have my suspicion.
Okay, then, your turn.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.